There are 252 town meeting members. One hundred twenty-seven constitutes a quorum. The constable informs me that a quorum is present. The sixth session of the 256th Annual Town Meeting will now come to order. Excuse me for a second. Quick review of the schedule for next week. Monday, May nineteenth, Wednesday, the twenty-first, if necessary. Then we go to Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, if necessary. Then we will definitely be back here on June second for a special town meeting and for articles that were moved to that date certain. If you forgot your red or green tally cards, get a blank set from the check-in table. You must write your name and precinct number on each card. Tally vote cards without names will not be counted. And the reason I say that is because people have passed in tally vote cards without names. Seating. Seats on the floor of the auditorium may be occupied by town meeting members, except for the front row, which may be used by members of the press and by members of town committees and staff participating in presentations. Such persons must wear non-voter stickers. Seats in the front row of the section before me are reserved for those who are on deck. If the next article is one on which you will be presenting, you may come forward and sit in one of those seats. Seats in front of me on the right are occupied by the select board, the town manager, the finance director, the town planner this evening, the assistant to the town manager, and administrative assistant. Seats to my left tonight are occupied by the planning board until we complete the zoning articles, at which point in time the finance committee will move there. New information from members can be found on the back table to my left, old information on the back table to my right. Amherst Media provides gavel-to-gavel coverage of our proceedings. Thanks to their staff and volunteers for making this happen. Videos are replayed frequently and can be viewed on the Amherst Media website. If you wish to speak, you must raise a hand and be recognized. When appropriate, please hold up a red or green card to indicate pro or con on an issue. When you are called on, please first state your name and precinct. If you need more than three minutes or more than five when speaking to a motion, speaking to your motion, you must request additional time before speaking, and town meeting will vote on your request. If you're speaking from the floor, please speak into a microphone that will be provided once you are recognized. This will allow viewers outside the auditorium to hear you. The microphone will be on when it is handed to you. Please hold it close to your mouth when you speak. Non-members who wish to speak should stand at the rear of the right-hand aisle. Any registered voter of the town of Amherst who is recognized by the moderator may speak without special permission. Others may speak with the permission of the majority. If you're making an amendment to an emotion, the amendment must be presented in writing with four copies submitted. Copy machine is located at the right-hand side of the front table here. Procedural motions, such as a motion to refer or a motion to dismiss, do not need to be presented in writing. If you make any motion from the floor, it must be the first thing you do after you have been recognized and have identified yourself. You cannot speak first and then make a motion. If you've not already done so, please silence your cell phone. We didn't quite make a quorum by seven o'clock. It was seven twelve when we had a quorum. I know it's hard to get here on time. I know it's a really busy season for everybody, but I ask everybody to respect those of you who can make it on time, and everybody should try and make it on time. Ten, fifteen, twenty minutes a night adds up to a whole night perhaps, so really try and be here so we can have a seven o'clock quorum. Town Meeting Coordinating Committee held elections, and I'd like to congratulate the following new or re-elected members to TMCC. They are Margaret Roberts, Nani Borak, Mary Streeter, and Melissa Perot. Congratulations and thank you for your service. If at any point in time you're confused about the proceedings, it is appropriate to call a point of order and ask for a clarification. It's always also okay to phone me, send me an email, or see me prior to town meeting if you need an explanation of any kind. Tonight, we were beginning with twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, which were moved to a date certain of two days ago, but we're continuing that through till tonight. After that, we drop back down to Article twenty-one and continue from there. So for Article twenty-eight, I recognize Mr. Schreiber to make the motion.
I move in terms of the article.
Motion has been made and seconded. I believe Mr. Stutzman is speaking to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to request two additional minutes.
Without objection, that's granted. You may continue.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, town meeting. Article twenty-eight, like Article twenty-six, seeks to address an imbalance between the town's housing inventory and the changing needs of our community. Our existing homes, many built over a century ago, aren't getting any smaller, but our households are. While the average household size in Amherst in 1960 was nearly seven, by 2010 it had shrunk to slightly more than four. There are several trends related to this: couples having fewer children, couples having children later, more single mother households, and more seniors living alone. The trend towards smaller households is not just a local one. The U.S. Census Bureau recently released a report showing that there has been a dramatic increase in the number of one-person households. From 1970 to 2012, the percentage of one-person households increased from seventeen percent to twenty-eight percent, and the percentage of married couples decreased from seventy-one percent to forty-nine percent. The census also shows that over the last two decades, Amherst has lost population aged twenty-five to forty-four much more rapidly than the rest of the country. So what is the town to do about these major shifts? In order to meet the evolving needs of our community, the town's housing stock must also evolve. The primary housing goal of the Amherst Master Plan is this: to provide a mix of housing that meets the physical needs of and is affordable to the broadest possible spectrum of our community, and that minimizes the impact on the environment. The plan goes on to say that one way to work towards this goal is to revise zoning regulations to make it easier to create attached and detached accessory apartments out of existing owner-occupied housing stock in all residential zoning districts. In addition to the master plan, revision of supplemental apartment regulations is one of the top three priorities of the town's housing production plan, which was completed in spring of last year. The Comprehensive Housing Market Study is the third plan within the last five years to specifically recommend revising this section of the bylaw. What is a supplemental apartment? A supplemental apartment is a self-contained living unit associated with an existing single-family home. It is different than a duplex in two ways. First, the two units that make up a duplex are roughly equal in size, while a supplemental apartment is always subordinate to the primary residence. Next slide, please. Supplemental apartments offer a wide range of benefits to people in various life stages and circumstances, including the following: older singles or couples who live in large homes with unused space and rising operating and maintenance costs; middle-aged empty nesters whose children have moved out, leaving empty bedrooms, and whose elderly parents require living space in close proximity; younger singles or couples who need additional income to help pay their monthly mortgage payments; single working parents who would like tenants to help with maintenance and to provide childcare while the parent is away; people who spend significant time traveling or who have a second home elsewhere and do not want to leave their primary home unoccupied. Supplemental apartments allow a community to accomplish many important goals. They allow the creation of new living units without the expense of new infrastructure. They help to upgrade the efficiency standards of existing houses to reduce overall energy consumption. They help to generate a flow of new dollars within the community from home equity. They reduce the cost of care for the elderly, who can now receive in-home care services from either family members living in the primary dwelling or professional caregivers while living in an accessory apartment. They also help to foster a sense of place in a community by improving the existing housing stock and allowing people to remain in their neighborhoods through all stages of life. In light of these benefits provided by supplemental apartments, Article twenty-eight seeks to promote their provision in the town of Amherst. Supplemental attached apartments are already allowed in the town and have been since 1968. Article twenty-eight would revise the regulations for attached supplemental apartments and also create a new category: supplemental detached dwelling unit. Attached supplemental apartments would be grouped into two categories. One would be those units which involve minimal significant changes to the building and site. When these units meet the standards in the article, which have been adopted from recent ZBA special permits for supplemental apartments, they could be allowed by administrative review of the building commissioner. The second category of attached units would be those which involve more significant alterations or did not meet the prescribed standards. These would be allowed in all residential zoning districts except the RF district, and in all cases would require a special permit. Article twenty-eight would also create a new category: detached supplemental dwelling unit. These would be freestanding buildings, created either by new construction or by conversion of existing outbuildings. The minimum size would be three hundred and fifty square feet, the maximum eight hundred square feet. An exception is made for units which are fully handicapped accessible, which may be up to nine hundred square feet. Either the principal dwelling or the supplemental dwelling must be owner-occupied. Parking regulations and other standard zoning requirements would still apply. There would also be an occupancy limit of three adults. No lodging use, that is rental by the room, would be permitted in either dwelling. Our current supplemental apartment regulations do not contain a prohibition on lodging use. Regarding dimensional regulations, the additional lot area per family requirement would not apply to supplemental detached dwelling units. However, setbacks, lot coverage, and building coverage regulations would still apply. It has been asked how many of these units would be built. A look at the rate at which supplemental apartments have been permitted and constructed in the past suggests a rather modest rate. From 2003 to the present, there have been a total of twenty-five permits approved for twenty-one new apartments and four modifications to existing units. This averages a little over two units per year. A few notes on Article twenty-eight's implications for rentals. Supplemental apartments can only occur when an owner occupies one of the units. These are not out-of-town investment opportunities. Supplemental apartments would make homeownership more viable throughout town by providing rental income to owner occupants. The owner occupancy requirement would also contribute to rental oversight and provide neighborhoods with a balance of renters and owners. Finally, any new rental units provided would be subject to the town's rental registration bylaw. The planning board voted seven to zero, with two members absent to support Article twenty-eight. In summary, the changes proposed in this article are a top housing recommendation of multiple studies, including the town's master plan. They would provide a more diverse housing stock in the town, and they would address the evolving needs of our community. I thank you for your time and ask you to support Article twenty-eight.
Thank you. Mr. Wald for the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On April twenty-second, the Select Board voted unanimously to recommend this article. As is widely recognized, Amherst is facing many challenges in delivering the right types of housing for our community. We've talked a lot about it already. It'll come up again in the coming days, or maybe weeks, depending on how things go. And this measure updates existing zoning as a way of addressing that challenge. It encourages responsible infill, as you heard, in keeping with the master plan and the housing study. And I should say, three members of the Select Board served on the Comprehensive Planning Committee that helped to produce the master plan, and this was among our top issues of discussion. What we like about this in particular is it's very well focused. It's not a one-size-fits-all. It comes on a very specific strategy, number H1E, if you care to look it up. It's tailored to the needs of neighborhoods. It's sensitive to the needs of people who live there. As you heard, there are safeguards in place as far as design, size, number of occupants, owner occupancy, and so forth. This is a measure that's neighborhood-friendly and family-friendly, and we ask you to support it.
Thank you. And Mr. Sharma for the Finance Committee. I don't know where you are.
The Finance Committee voted five-zero, one absent to recommend this article. Before I tell you the reasoning on this particular article, let me just take a moment and talk about how the Finance Committee frames issues that come up before us and how we arrive at the conclusions. These are my personal observations and not an agreed-to position of the Finance Committee, so please consider this one perspective from inside the committee. The main question we ask of any article is, what are the financial implications for the town? This is the way we frame all proposals that come up before us. Note a couple of important things about this framing question. We are focused on financial implications. To the extent humanly possible, we try to steer clear of political or social or other considerations that are not directly financial. Other committees and this body are better suited to address such non-financial considerations. Our focus is on the town as an entity, not particular individuals, not groups, not neighborhoods, but the town as a whole. In practical terms, the town as a whole means the budget. That is, we want to evaluate how a particular proposal might impact the budget in the short run and the overall health of the town's financial condition over the long run. Note that while the framing question is rather straightforward, the answers are not so. We don't have a crystal ball to see how something will shape up into the unknown future, so we make judgments based on the information available, and knowing that such judgments are fallible, we tend to be cautious and conservative. However good a new idea may look at first sight, we don't want to be jumping from the frying pan into the fire, so to say, because getting back into the frying pan will not be easy. When we are having deliberations in the committee, it's really an educational process. We're trying to grasp and understand the issues around the proposal, and that involves listening to each other and trying to understand each other's point of view. So we rely a great deal on the discussions amongst ourselves, but also very much on the information provided by the sponsors of the articles, whether staff or boards or petitioners. They have the domain knowledge, and in many cases, they are the ones to execute the intent of the article. It would be foolish to not give their counsel and expertise considerable weight, and we try not to be foolish. So with this background, let's get back to the Article twenty-eight. The article pertains to a critically important issue in town: housing. It recommends splitting the current single category into three separate categories: supplemental apartment one, supplemental apartment two, and supplemental detached dwelling unit. This change clarifies the zoning bylaw and is part of the larger effort toward flexibility in housing around town to facilitate increase in modest-price housing. This change has the potential to increase housing supply and contribute to the property tax base of the town, and that is our reasoning why we support this article.
Thank you. This will require a two-thirds vote to pass since we are changing the zoning bylaw. I now call on Mr. Hornick from the Housing and Sheltering Committee.
John Hornick, Precinct Seven. Mr. Moderator, I have a somewhat lengthy presentation. I'll need seven minutes, please.
Mr. Hornick is requesting an additional four minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes do have it. You may continue.
Thank you. On April thirtieth, the Housing and Sheltering Committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of residential zoning articles proposed by the planning board. The HSC played a key role in the development of the Amherst Housing Production Plan. While the focus was on the need for affordable housing, this report documented various changes to the town population, some of which have been presented or mentioned in this town meeting. Just to review, the facts are these: the number of school-age children has been steadily declining. The number and proportion of adults between the ages of twenty-six and forty-five have been steadily declining. The number and proportion of persons over the age of sixty has been steadily increasing. The number and proportion of adults between the ages of eighteen and twenty-five has been steadily increasing. Thus, we are becoming a town predominantly composed of students and older people. Young families are no longer present as they once were. Why has this happened? There has been virtually no expansion of new housing in Amherst. The number of units that we have today is only slightly greater than the numbers we had twenty years ago. The rise in population of eighteen to twenty-five can be largely explained by increasing enrollments at the university. The rise in enrollment has been significantly greater than the increase in on-campus housing. That has increased the demand for housing in Amherst. While the housing supply remains roughly constant, the increased demand has raised the value of existing housing, creating an opportunity for developers to escalate rents and purchase formerly single-family homes throughout our community. Only groups of students can afford the rents for apartments and small homes. Many young families have been effectively priced out. The increase of persons over the age of sixty is attributable both to the development of specialty housing for older adults and the fact that many of those who already owned homes when younger are retiring in place. Can we have this overhead, please? Oh, you got it. Great, thank you. Those are the facts at ten thousand feet. What are the facts on the ground? Let me illustrate with my own neighborhood. This is an aerial view of Carriage Lane and Surrey Lanes. There are twenty-five houses. All but four were constructed by a single developer as starter family homes. When I moved into this neighborhood about thirty years ago, the homes were occupied by young families. Two had boys who went to high school with my son. Another was the site of my daughter's piano lessons. Today, eight of these homes are occupied by student renters. By and large, frankly, they're good neighbors. There have been no ho-bahs or ho-downs. Last year, one group put a notice in everyone's mailbox announcing a weekend party and including a number to call, not the police, if we felt the event was getting too loud. So I am not concerned about having students as neighbors. What I am concerned about is the loss of families on my street. I miss seeing young children and their parents. Let's see. Sorry, I have another one. Oh, here it is. It feels like I am living in yet another remake of the science fiction movie, The Invasion of the Body Snatchers. I live on the cul-de-sac near the end, and the five houses closest to it are still non-student, but I feel like they are coming for me next. What can we do about this? We can ask the university to build a significant number of new units on campus to provide additional options for students. A recent letter to the Gazette recommended this path, but what do we know about the university's capital plan? In the fall, a key official did a community presentation of its current priorities. There were about ten buildings described, and not one was a student residence. John Fox, a longtime respected member of this town meeting, asked about plans for student housing. What answers did John get? It's in the university master plan. Nice they have it so they can point to it on occasions like this. We just built a new honors college with a student residence. As I said earlier, the number of net new units has not kept pace with increasing enrollments. Maybe the town gown committee and its consultant will move the university to get serious about building new housing, but we do not really need a town gown committee to know that this is and has been a problem, nor does the university need them to know what to do about it. Personally, I am skeptical that we will see a significant number of new student residences on campus in the next five years and maybe longer, certainly not enough to ameliorate the problems on Carriage Lane or elsewhere in the town. With anticipated increasing enrollments at the university, it would create even greater pressure on existing housing. What can we do? We can continue to lobby the university and our elected representatives, but that's not enough. We have to pass zoning changes that will encourage new housing. That's what the changes proposed by the planning board in Article twenty-eight and Article twenty-four are intended to do. I can already hear the objections. Students will end up occupying many of these units. You know what? I agree. If we pass these changes in regulations, students will occupy at least some of the new units. But if we don't pass these changes in regulations, students will occupy more and more of the existing units. Stopping the development of new units will not stop the students. Their economic muscle will simply result in their occupying a greater proportion of the town's houses. We have to build new units to make space again for young families in Amherst.
You need to finish up, sir. You exceeded your seven minutes.
Oh, sorry. Okay, if we don't do this, there's no chance of reversing the current trends. In five years, Wildwood School has been rehabbed and will be looking at a feasibility study for Fort River, but not as a school, as a senior center. For all these reasons, I urge you to pass Article twenty-eight tonight and Article twenty-four when it comes back before us on June second. Or the Body Snatchers will not only coming for me, but for you as well. Thank you.
Okay, we are now open for general discussion. Yes, right here.
James Parat, Precinct one. I have three questions I'd like to each answer. Why is RF?
Speak right into the mic.
Why is the RF district exempt?
Ask all three of your questions, please.
What are the penalties for not registering the property? And how will this affect our taxes?
Anybody care to answer these questions? Yes, Mr. Stutzman.
I can speak to at least the first question. Why is this? So I'd speak to at least the first question, which is, why does this not apply to the RF district? We don't have single-family homes in the RF district, and therefore, we couldn't have accompanying supplemental apartments.
Speak a little louder, please, when you're using the mic. Anybody want to speak to the other questions? And I remind you that no one is required to answer questions that are asked, so it's not out of order or anything if they don't, but anybody want to respond to penalties or taxes? Mr. Misanti.
On the question of taxes, our assessors will evaluate the value of the land and any improvements upon it. So it'd be the same approach to creating a value, and to the extent there was an improvement on a structure on the property, that would be taken into account in terms of establishing an assessment for the property.
There, further discussion. Yes, back corner, right there.
Isaac Benazir, Precinct eight. First of all, I want to thank the first speaker for, in seven minutes, doing something that hasn't been done yet in this township, explaining it in a rational, logical way to answer what I think have been very important issues before us for a long time. So I don't know who you are, but Masked Man, glad to have you. On another issue, there are some people in this town like me who continue to live here because of the kind of work that the planning committee and the community has supported for a long time. I decided to move south from Strong Street to Southeast Street because the weather is better there, first of all. And secondly, it provided a way for me to continue to contribute and be a member and enjoy being part of this community. You know, you can look at the dollar figures, but there's no way to measure the human consequences. And I'm very happy to spend the next few years in a unit that was built under this jurisdiction that allows me to live with my daughter in a separate, private, entry kind of facility and so that I can continue to be a nuisance to this town. So I hope you will look at this. Don't worry about the numbers. The reality is, we need young people to continue this community and the economics in our society. All of them are, you read Krugman and some of the other minds on this issue. We're entering into an economic period where we're not going to have the benefits that the middle class had after World War II, and I'm one of the recipients of those benefits. It's changing. It's not the same country anymore. So we need to have housing that's going to reflect the reality of the economy so we can thrive. So give this serious attention.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker.
This is in answer to Mr. Parat's question earlier.
This is in answer to Mr. Parat's question earlier. I cannot remember the penalties for, under the general bylaw, rental registration bylaw. Perhaps the building commissioner could speak to those, but it is a requirement of this amendment that any rental property be registered under that bylaw. And any violation of the zoning bylaw is a hundred dollars per violation, and every day that a violation continues is a separate violation. So it can add up.
Yeah, holding the red card there. Yes, that's you, yes.
John Cool, Precinct 2. We have a supplemental apartment that we built about a dozen years ago for my mother-in-law. It worked out very satisfactorily. She has since left the apartment and has since passed on. We have since then rented the apartment. We have registered it. It cost a hundred dollars. We have paid taxes on it. The assessment did go up. And we have been able to stay in that house because we have the added income. The student rental has been to a graduate student each time, current one in place for over, for three years and is expected to stay another. I have never had to call the police. I've never even had to call the renter with any problems. And that's because we have an open dialogue, and she knows who we are and where we are, and likewise, we know where she is and where she is. I doubt that our neighbors could even tell you that we have an apartment, or that it's male or female, or it comes or goes, because it's just like it was another person living in our household, except that it is private. She pays rent. We are able to stay in place. And while I don't know how much we help the demographic by staying in place, yet we do stay there. And I suspect that when we do leave there, the house, which the main house still makes a very fine family home, will be affordable to a family with children. So it answers so many questions in so many positive ways that I think we should do everything to encourage this.
Thank you. Yes, white shirts, second row from the back.
Hi, Stephanie Gel from Precinct 2. I have three questions. The first one, I think, is for Mr. Tucker. If you've, if you've got a, if there is that a hundred dollar a day fine, and it's accumulating, and the landlord doesn't pay it, what are the consequences? Is it like not paying your property taxes? That's my first question. Should he answer it, or shall I wait? Shall I say?
You need to speak, everything you need to speak and give away the microphone.
Okay. Secondly, if I chose to build such an addition to my house, do I need to get the permission of my abutters? And thirdly, if I do that and say I've got a few units, but I'm living in my house, and then I sell the house with those units to somebody, and then it turns out they never move in, they sell, you know, they rent out the whole thing, what is to prevent that from happening?
And I will call on Mr. Tucker, but just a reminder that you can't actually request who's your questions are to. The questions are always directed to the moderator, and people may choose or choose not to answer them. Having said that, Mr. Tucker.
The fine is to the property owner and not to the tenant. So it accumulates against the property owner's bank account and not yours if you're the tenant. The, there are three options under this amendment for how a supplemental unit could occur. A supplemental apartment that's entirely within the existing single-family home, a supplemental apartment that can increase the footprint about 10% or have other significant external changes like fire escapes and things like that, and a freestanding supplemental detached dwelling. The second two categories require a special permit under all circumstances. So there would be a public hearing before the zoning board of appeals. Abutters would be notified. Abutters are not making the decision. The zoning board of appeals is making the decision. Anyone who is modifying their property is well advised to talk to their neighbors first, but that's not a yes-no provision. The circumstance you described at the end would, if the property transferred and there was a supplemental apartment in it, but there was not a property owner living there anymore, it became an absentee rental, that would be a violation of the zoning bylaw. And we have, remembering that any rental at all has to go through the residential rental bylaw and have both a permit and a registration, we have the mechanism to find out that that's happening and to stop it. The town manager, by the way, reminded me that the fine for violation of the rental bylaw is the same as for zoning. So it would be a hundred dollars from zoning and a hundred dollars from the rental bylaw daily accumulating.
Thank you. Yes, for the planning board.
Rob Crowder. The one item that was not mentioned was the idea that there might be more than one supplemental unit. There will only be one. And if you read in the first paragraph, 5.011, the last sentence, only one supplemental dwelling unit shall be permitted as an accessory to a one-family detached dwelling.
Yes, right here on the aisle.
Greenbaum Precinct 1. I have a question, and that has to do with a modification we made last year in converting garages, barns, sheds, et cetera. We came up with a 350-square foot minimum. But those buildings all had to be structures that were built before 1964 and documented as to have been built before 1964. I don't see where in these amendments that has been changed, and that leads to confusion to me, because it looks like one can build a new shed and put an apartment in there, but anybody who has an existing shed they want to convert, it has to be older than 1964. Will somebody clarify that for me?
Yes, Mr. Stuttsman.
There's actually a section in the new Article 28 which states that when an existing outbuilding is converted under this article, that it falls under the jurisdiction of this article and not the one you were referring to, which is a different use category called converted dwelling. So when these standards are met, it falls under this category.
I'm sorry. There's lots of other people with hands, so I'm going to move on. Answers. Would you, Mr. Crowder, would you like to try and explain a little more?
As well, in both cases, it would require a special permit. So the regulation would be the same regardless of when it was built.
Just want to remind you again, there's, we can ask questions. There's no guarantee that questions will be answered. That's not a guarantee in town meeting. Yes, in the back corner there.
Vince O'Connor, Precinct 1. I'm going to speak in opposition to this article and, and point out that the speaker, the previous speakers who have talked about the fact of having supplemental apartments basically are presenting an argument in favor of the current system because those supplemental apartments came to, into existence under the current system, which requires a special permit and the notification of abutters. Obviously, the sys, that system has worked well because those apartments exist, and there are people who have made use of them. So I don't, I don't know why we are seeking to change a system that obviously is working, from the testimony of our own members here and from, clearly from the records of the zoning board of appeals, where I don't believe there has been a supplemental apartment application, which, and, and they're here, heard rather rapidly, so within two months or so, you get a decision, where a single application for supplemental apartment has been denied. It's just a question of making sure that the abutters are notified and that there is some public process to the creation of a supplemental apartment. I do, I do have a concern on, at the bottom of page 21 in the warrant, you'll see the second to the last paragraph numbered, number one, that says supplemental apartment number one, talks about a, that requires no significant external changes. That, that kind of judgment, I think, is best left to this, to the special permit granting authority, not to an individual. I would have been a lot happier and a lot more willing to be supportive if that word was not there. External changes to the building beyond entrances and windows required by the building code. The other problem I have with the article is, is far more substantial. It essentially, this article essentially creates a supplemental detached dwelling unit, which means you can build a single-family home in your backyard, a home that would have the potential for three bedrooms, i.e. to accommodate three individuals. If you built those bedrooms with full baths, the likelihood is that they would accommodate six individuals. We don't have building inspectors that go around and do bed checks. This is simply, this is going to make and the, the single-family home market, especially where there are large lots, a, a speculators, whether those speculators live in town or out of town, whether they claim to live there or actually live there, this is going to make single-family homes in Amherst more expensive because of the possibility that people can essentially build an entirely separate dwelling unit in their backyards.
Finish up, please, Mr. Crowder. Yes, Mr. Stuttsman.
So yeah, I'd speak to both of those points. I think the first concern was that we're making it too easy to have a supplemental apartment, and that we're moving a category, creating a new category which would not require a special permit. You'll see in the article that there are still requirements for that, and when supplemental apartments have been permitted in the recent past, the ZBA has been issuing almost identical conditions for these special permits. So while waiting two months for a piece of paper may not seem like a long time, waiting two months to know if you can even go about something is a fairly long time. And if this is something that we want in the town, I think we should make it that much easier and recognize that we've been applying the same conditions and give the building commissioner of the jurisdiction to identify those cases. And as far as the second contention, that we're going to see a lot of houses popping up with three bedrooms and three independent baths, I think we need to recall that the maximum size allowed is 800 square feet. I can't think of too many 800-square-foot houses with three bedrooms and three baths off the top of my head. And keeping in mind that the number of bedrooms is going to be limited, I would also remind members of town meeting that the recent housing market study showed that students outcompete single families in terms of bedrooms. So therefore, the fewer bedrooms there are, the less competitive gap there is between owners and renters, between families and renters. So we see a particularly large gap in the four-bedroom homes, and I think these homes would have the smallest gap.
I'm sorry, whoever that was was not recognized, so I won't accept that. Yes, right here on the aisle.
Michael Burkhardt, Precinct 6. I'd be excited to support this if I knew it was going to be restricted to families, elderly, and young adults over the age of 25. There's no data presented to show that many of the people who are seeking housing in this town are in fact not students, but, and not young families, but are in fact young adults who are looking for housing. So that is another gap in here that does not work for me. I feel no compunction to create more housing to meet the needs of the university. I know they're forcing this on us. I think there are other ways to deal with it. There are ways to attract developers who would develop apartments, but this, I do not want to see us change the character of the town to one where we're really a town that provides housing for students of the university.
Mr. Tucker.
In response to the question about data with regard to who the housing demand is, the recent comprehensive Amherst housing market study indicated that nearly 50% of the demand for rental units was non-students. That's from RKG, the consultants who worked on that report. So there is a very substantial market out there of non-students looking for housing. The few projects that have been built recently that included upper-floor apartments had inquiries in the hundreds from non-students. So that market is there.
Yes, third row, right there.
Chris Riddle, Precinct 2. I just want to speak in favor. This is just an extremely good idea. We should, we should, we should vote for this thing without question, as far as I'm concerned. I'm thinking of my daughter and son-in-law and their, and their two-year-old daughter who have been looking for housing in the Amherst area, and, and their, their abilities are modest, and their, their price range is such that they've ended up instead in Hadley, and it sure would, and they would, they would be just the sort of young people that we would love here, and they have not been able to find what they're looking for at a price range that they can afford in, in Amherst. And so I'm also thinking in terms of having, making it, facilitating mother-in-law apartments, apartments for other family members. It just seems like there'll be a, you know, it will be a small but significant addition to our housing stock, and it'll fill a lot of people's needs. I'm not worried about these units going to large numbers of students, as Miss, as our previous speaker suggested. Let's vote for this thing. This is a great idea.
Thank you. Yes, second row, right there.
Mr. Moderator, I reflect my colleagues' sentiments, and I call the question.
Motion has been made for the previous question. We will now come to immediate vote. If two-thirds of you vote, yes, here, point of order.
I don't think you can make a comment and agree with something that other people have said and then call the question.
You know, I actually thought that too, but I determined that it wasn't a substantive comment. It was just a little interjection of humor. Hey, hey, hey. I'm serious. I did not feel he was speaking to anything. I thinking he was just being informal and friendly when his full intention when standing up was to make a motion. And this is how I've ruled, and that's what we're doing. So we're coming to a vote on the motion for the previous question. Everybody with me. Two-thirds of you vote yes. We will then vote on the article before us. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, please say no.
No.
I don't hear two-thirds. We will continue with discussion. Yes, center, second row from the back there.
Hi, Mills Lecour, Precinct 9. One of the basic things is, I live in a neighborhood right in downtown that where, when it was built in the early 19, late 1800s, early 1900s, had 66-foot frontage lots. So when I bought my house, I bought a double lot. But of course, when the zoning got changed in the 1970s, and we made it very difficult to have any kind of density in this town, I have a single-family lot. Now, when I read over this article and on my bicycle ride into work, I started paying attention to, okay, how many lots could actually really benefit from this and provide some new units for town? Because I mean, that's our basic problem, is we have not kept up with the supply for the demand that we've had over the last 40 years. And that's why we have a housing crisis across all affordability spectrums. You know, it's not just the fact that we're, you know, looming above, just below, you know, above 10%. I mean, we're one of the few communities in the whole state that is above 10% of rural housing. We have a problem of supply across every spectrum because we have not allowed enough development to happen in our community. So I look at this bylaw as a wonderful thing to allow some infill in some of these lots in my neighborhood that didn't get fully developed the first time around in the, in the late 1800s, early 1900s. And I would further note that I have three people in my office at UMass who have kept their families in other communities but have taken a job at UMass. And so they come in and they rent out apartments for the week and then go back home during the weekends. And they've all just been through having to find new housing because the place they were living got sold. And it's pretty scary to hear the kinds of places that they were looking at in this town because we have no supply, we have a less than 1% vacancy rate, and people know that they're going to rent out their stuff so they don't have to put any effort into maintaining it. It's a really sad state of affairs. We need a lot more housing stock, and this is a wonderful way We need a lot more housing stock, and this is a wonderful way to provide some of that housing stock in a responsible way. I mean, you know, it's it's I look forward to maybe creating a garage with an apartment in it that's fully accessible so that as I don't want to feel like going up and down the stairs in my house, I can rent out my house and maybe live in this apartment and be able to stay in Amherst. I really appreciated the fact that this is a way for a lot of people to stay in Amherst. So I fully support this article, and I hope you will, too.
Yes, back of the aisle there, standing.
Jim Oldham, precinct five. I'm leaning largely in favor of this article, but I but I do have a concern every time that we do zoning that's based on owner occupancy. And I would appreciate it would help me understand better the most detailed explanation possible for the that anyone is able and willing to give to help us understand what happens in the case after the original owner occupier sells the house and moves out, and so now you have a residence with a second supplemental unit. It's up for sale, somebody buys it. What what qualifies if they buy it and rent it out but tell you the they're keep they're not renting the supplemental supplemental unit? Or they rent the whole place and say, we've got that extra kitchen, but we'll open the doors between them, and and people are really living as a single set of students in there? Who's who's going to check? How do we check? How do we know that I mean, what constitutes a violation is what I'm trying to understand? How we see that violation and how we address that violation? Because in general, the arguments are compelling for me, the idea of of making owner-occupied homes more affordable to families because they can have rentals, making spaces available for for a diverse set of possible renters. But I do worry about hard-to-enforce zoning requirements, and it does seem to me that the owner occupancy the owner occupancy as the the thing that makes it legal or illegal is is challenging, not because you can't prove whether or not someone's an owner occupier, though we have had that, we have been fooled in town in the past, but because it seems to me that, you know, once someone owns a building, they can say, oh, we're not using the other unit separately, or we're keeping it vacant, but who's going to go in and really see?
Mr. Moore?
Now, with the rental registration program that we've started, we've dealt with this exact issue, and the the most accurate way we've been able to gather this information is through the assessor's records. What we've done is polled every code that would give any indication that the property may not be owner-occupied. And since we started tracking enforcement almost two years ago, we do get a weekly report from the assessor's office, and we look for any indicator, changes over to LLCs, changes in the location that the tax bills are sent. So we make a pretty concerted effort to find these properties when they change from owner occupancy and look for a rental arrangement. Now, these would all be subject to the rental registration program even if they're owner-occupied. So we would we would have the database, we'd have the knowledge of the the property on an annual basis when they go to renew and be looking for those changes, such as the location or mailing address for the owner or original owner occupant. The penalty for the rental registration program is $100 per day. We are enforcing this on a regular basis. Failure to pay the fine or respond is a complaint heard in district court, and from there there's other penalties, such as suspension or inability to rental rent the property in the future.
Yes, all the way over there.
Carolyn Holstein, precinct two, member of the zoning board. I call a previous question.
Motion for the previous question has been made and seconded. We will now come to immediate vote. If two-thirds of you vote yes, we will then come to a vote on Article 28. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator, here's two-thirds. We will now come to a vote on Article 28. This requires a two-thirds vote. We are changing the zoning bylaw. All those in favor of Article 28, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator, here's two-thirds. We will have a counted vote. If I see 15 hands raised, we will have a tally. One of three, I see 15, we will have a tally vote. Card three, correct. The way the tally vote works, just a reminder, we are using tally card number three. Please pass card number three towards the aisle where your tellers are located. Please pass the card with the correct vote number. A red card is a no vote, a green card is a yes vote. Please stay in your seats until the tellers have collected the cards and your row is released. If you leave your seat and the teller doesn't see you, your card will not be counted. There were 102 yes votes and 48 no votes. A two-thirds majority has been achieved. Article 28 has passed. We now move on to Article 29, and I recognize Mr. Schreiber for a motion.
I move in terms of the article.
Do I hear a second? Motion has been made and seconded, and I call on Mr. Weber to make the statement for the planning board.
Thank you. I'd like to begin with this short article by just reading it in its entirety, if the clock could start, please. So this would change language in a restrictive covenant for 284 North Pleasant Street to read as follows. Notwithstanding the zoning designation of the subject premises and any uses allowed thereby under the Amherst zoning bylaw, as such bylaw may be amended from time to time, the use of the premises shall be limited on the first floor to the following: medical or dental offices, chiropractic offices, and offices of alternative integrative medicine, as well as related medical and therapeutic services for the treatment of patients in person, predominantly by appointment, and nonprofit educational or religious uses, as permitted under General Law's Chapter 40A, Section 3, and for profit trade professional or other educational institution, and real estate, insurance, or other business or professional offices providing services to the public in person on the premises, not to include banks, and technical and professional offices providing services in person on the premises, predominantly by appointment, and administrative business offices not providing services to the general public in person. That is, not providing services to the general public in person on the premises, and shall be limited on the upper floor and basement to residential use. Article 29 is the planning board's version of Article 30. It would revise this existing restrictive covenant between the town and the property owner to allow certain additional uses. As background, a restrictive covenant is an agreement between the town and a property owner. It goes beyond the zoning map and zoning bylaw to control the uses on a particular parcel. In this case, 2004 town meeting rezoned 284 North Pleasant Street from general residence, RG, to limited business, BL. Because this property is on the periphery of a residential neighborhood, the site is unsuitable for many uses normally permitted in the limited business district. However, it is suitable for a variety of lower-impact uses. The proposed uses under the article are office-type uses and are limited to the first floor. Allowing these additional uses will add to the diversity and vibrancy of the downtown areas adjacent to Kendrick Park without adverse impact to the surrounding neighborhood. Essentially, we're trying to help this site to achieve a better ability to rent to, you know, commercial tenants without unduly changing the character of the site or affecting the adjacent residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the select board, Ms. Kruger?
Yes. On April 22nd, the select board voted unanimously to support Article 29. As you heard, this is the planning board's version for modifying the restricted restrictive covenant on this parcel in order to expand the range of uses slightly to include medical offices in addition to chiropractic and allow for-profit educational and business uses. Previous speaker. Previous speaker detailed this. As you just heard from the planning board, the location of this property on North Pleasant Street adjacent to the downtown business district makes it an appropriate location for slightly expanded business uses. Over time, the original uses approved for the site have limited the possible renters for this location, and believe currently, or recently, this tenant moved out and has left this space vacant. And in looking at this article, we feel that occupied office space here contributes to the overall vitality of the downtown, so by allowing the flexibility under Article 29 will help to keep this space occupied. It's my understanding the petitioner agrees that the planning board language, and this is the petitioner who submitted Article 30, believes that the planning board language is more precise and preferable to what was submitted, but Article 30 remains on the warrant with the intent of dismissing it should Article 29 pass. And I would just ask, maybe the map could be put up again so people can understand where this is in proximity to Kendrick Park and the downtown.
Thank you. Ms. Moran for the finance committee, Mr. Slaughter for the finance committee.
Doug Slaughter, finance committee. You'll note in the, in the finance committee report to town meeting that it says no recommendation. That's also known as no position, which is the finance committee's position on this particular article. That is not to say that we recommend no, it's to say we have no recommendation or no position on this, so we have neither a positive nor a negative approach to this. Thank you.
Article 29 is a modification to a restrictive covenant. It is not a zoning bylaw change, therefore it only will require a majority vote to pass. I now call on Mr. Ewart, who is the petitioner of Article 30. And is he in the, there you are, and you may step forward. Mr. Ewart is not a registered voter in Amherst, so I will have a quick check of the town. Do we give Mr. Ewart permission to speak? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. You may speak, Mr. Ewart.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, can I have two additional minutes?
Yes, I'm going to do that without objection because I believe it's your intention to speak to both 29 and 30 at this point in time.
Correct.
So we have a net gain of a minute, so yes, you have permission.
I'm Howard Ewart. I'm the owner of 284 North Pleasant Street. I'm going to speak to both Article 29 and 30 at this time in the hope of saving a lot of time by doing it this way. I'm going to begin my presentation by giving my conclusion, which is procedurally, please vote yes on 29. If 29 passes, we will make a motion to dismiss 30, and you get a two-for-one deal out of that. I've been to each of the town meeting precinct meetings to offer people an opportunity to talk about this, and I've got a few questions from those people that have kind of been touched on tonight, but I'm just going to briefly go over them. First of all, what's the goal? Article 29 and 30 both seek to slightly increase the allowable uses at this property by adding professional and technical office uses which are listed in the warrant. Currently, even though the building is zoned business, business limited, only three uses are allowed. I'm allowed to have a chiropractic office, religious, or nonprofit educational. The requested professional office uses would have low impact on the neighborhood, and yet for me it would make a big difference if I had a broader range of uses that I could rent the space to. Right now, it's been vacant for six, since January because it's hard to find a tenant who fits all the requirements and is a nonprofit organization. One of the questions was, why does the town meeting need to address this issue? If it's only for one property, one property owner, it doesn't seem appropriate. And the reason is because this property has a unique form of zoning called contract zoning. And a contract zoning means that the town has entered into an agreement with the property owner, and that that contract specifies exactly what uses are allowed. So even though it's in the business limited zone, I have three uses that I'm allowed. And that's, of course, far less than what other people in the business limited zone are allowed. And in order to change that contract, the only way to do that is to ask the town meeting to authorize the select board to change the contract. So that's why we're here, and I apologize for taking all of your time, but that's the way it has to be done. One question was, how do my neighbors feel about this change? And of course, they'll have the opportunity to speak in a minute, but generally, they've been very supportive. Many of them signed my petition to get this on the warrant because they think it's the right thing to do. Finally, I have to admit, the question is, why are there two articles, why 29 and also 30, on the same topic? And the reason for that is that I made a big mistake. I filed my petition, which became Article 30, and I thought I was very clever about how I did it, and I used numbers from the zoning bylaw to describe each of the uses that I was asking for. And that's not the right way to do it. So when this, when the planning board was reviewing this as a warrant article that had something to do with zoning, they noticed my error, and they corrected my error, and they produced their own version of my petition, and that's what became Article 29. So for that, I'm very appreciative that they did that because once I made my error, I could not correct it because the deadline had passed, and I would have missed this opportunity. So that brings us back to the beginning, the conclusion. If you feel that professional office uses should be allowed at this location, please vote yes on 29, and if you pass 29, we'll make a motion to dismiss 30, and you can move on. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Is there discussion before we come to a vote? I see a hand, yes.
Identify yourself, please. Oh, Isaac Benezro, who's the eighth precinct. When I first came to town, I became, I rented the house next door to the gentleman who just spoke. So in terms of how the neighbors feel about it, if it counts, the time when I came in, it was a pleasure to have them as neighbors. They greeted us, they made us feel welcome, they made us feel that this is the town where we ought to settle. And with, despite some cars on the side where they have parking, there's never been any kind of nuisance problem. I can't say the same thing for the adjoining houses on the other side, which, who decided on Thursday about nine o'clock, the party is to begin, outside my bedroom. So I'm not anti-students, but there is a difference, let's face it, and I experienced that difference. But the other thing is, he's taking this property, which needed tremendous repairs, as I understand it, there was a fire there prior to his ownership, and had turned it into a very profitable property as far as you and I are concerned. If you look, if you ask the tax people in our town what the taxes, what taxes we're receiving, after he improved that property and kept it operating as a professional, you'll find out, we have gold in that corner. Why not, why not mine it? I like that.
Further discussion? Yes, I see a hand back there.
I'm Morianne Adams, precinct 10. I'm a neighbor just down the street from this residence and I'm, and this business office, and I must say, it's an enormous improvement, both visually and sound-wise from what was there. And Mr. Ewart has made an enormous effort to visit all of the neighbors, make sure that we were on board, make sure we understood what happened. So I know that many of the neighbors join me in wishing him well with his venture.
And are we ready to come to a vote? It looks like we are. Again, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion before you under Article 29, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The ayes have it unanimously. Now move on to Article 30, and I recognize Mr. Schreiber.
I move to dismiss the article.
I hear a second, you may speak to your motion.
For the reasons stated earlier.
Thank you. And Mr., let's see, Ms. Kruger for the select board.
Same.
Thank you. Mr. Slaughter for the finance committee.
Finance committee has no position.
Thank you. The motion before us is a motion to dismiss Article 30. Is there further discussion before we vote on this? I see no hands, let's come to a vote. This requires a majority for dismissal. All those in favor of the motion to dismiss Article 30, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. I hear unanimous vote in favor of dismissal. 30 is dismissed. We now go back in time to Article 21. We release the planning board from their front-table servitude, and the finance committee can replace them. Article 21, I call on Mr. Slaughter to make a motion under the article.
I move to dismiss the article.
I hear a second, you may speak to your motion.
So the next, next couple of articles are a bit of, in some sense, is some housekeeping relative to some actions we took earlier in town meeting.
Close the microphone and talk loud, it's not coming through.
All right, I'm sorry. I'll speak a little more into the microphone. This article and the next one are a little bit of bookkeeping relative to some actions we took earlier in town meeting. With the addition of monies to the community services budget, the subsequent article, Article 22, will move some money into that specific aspect of the budget, and as such, that will keep our budget in balance, and therefore, we do not need what is identified in Article 21, which is external to the community services budget. That being said, I believe the town manager would, would agree that the amounts that are shown on Article 21 were the ones that people were thinking about when they voted back in the budget for community services, and so I think he'll probably follow the guidance of town meeting with regard to that. The finance committee recommends dismissal of this article.
Thank you. Ms. Brewer for the select board.
Y'all know how much I love our paper here, so we have the, the select board voted also to dismiss this article, although if you look back to the April 28 select board report, it will say that we voted unanimously in favor of the article. We had to change that vote on May 5 to dismiss it for the reasons that Mr. Slaughter just stated. Again, if you weren't here that night on April 28, we added money to page 21, community services budget. Now that we're all the way on page 58, Article 21, we no longer need this article to accomplish the things that were accomplished on April 28. As Mr. Slaughter alluded to, by putting the money in the community services budget, it's actually under the town manager's control how to spend that. He is not obligated to spend it in the way that it was laid out in Article 21, but we do believe at this point that he intends to do so based on the expressions of the select board, the finance committee, and town meeting members. I will also remind you that moving into next year's budget, this will be a question for how we do this in next year's budget, so please plan to engage in this process prior to next annual town meeting. We'll want to talk about this before the town manager's budget comes out in January.
Thank you. The motion to dismiss requires a majority vote. Is there discussion before we come to a vote? Yes, I see a hand in the back corner there.
Vince O'Connor, precinct 1. During the discussion as to whether to put this amount in the community services budget or have it be a standalone article, there was talk about the fact that as a result of, of funding our social services programs from the block grants, which were now, now no longer eligible, that we had to reduce the number of agencies. I think the maximum is five, we have three here, and that was what was funded. I, I think that these three agencies are very meritorious and so forth, but I think looking forward to next year, I think it's important that we think about what other agencies and social services that we can, whose presence in this community we can enhance by providing small amounts of seed money that they can use to get matching grants and so forth. And I am particularly want to focus on a follow-up question that I asked the police chief after the debate on community services. It didn't take an eight-hour seminar, but the police chief did say that the police department is not exactly organized to deal with people with mental health problems. Prior to putting our social services programs in the, and funding them through the block grant program, we used to fund three mental health agencies in town directed toward both individuals and families. And I believe that come the fall, when the, the process starts again, I hope that, I will be present, but I hope others will join me in speaking to the manager and the select board about the need to assist the police department and, and to really enhance our community by providing additional, funding for additional agencies, and in particular, for agencies that deal with mental health issues. All over the country, we see police departments engaged in really regrettable actions in the, in the process of dealing with people with mental health issues. And I think that those issues are best dealt with by other agencies and more effectively, and they keep those mental health issues from becoming police issues. And I hope that we will take the opportunity next fall to enhance this program and to, and to add other agencies to the expenditures under social services and community services. Thank you.
Further discussion before we come to a vote? I see no hands. We will now come to a vote on the motion to dismiss Article 21. This requires a majority. All those in favor of the motion for dismissal, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We now move on to Article 22, and I call on Mr. Slaughter.
I move to appropriate and transfer $125,000 from free cash in the undesignated fund balance of the general fund to balance the 2015 fiscal year budget.
I hear a second, you may speak to your motion.
So because we So because we put the additional $125,000 specifically into the community services aspect of our budget, we now need to balance our budget because we didn't have revenue to go with that. This is the revenue that will pay for that addition to that aspect of the budget. Therefore, the Finance Committee recommends this to you.
Thank you. Ms. Brewer for the Select Board.
The Select Board changed its initial recommendation to dismiss to actually a unanimous recommendation that we actually fund this at the $125,000 figure on May 5.
Thank you. This requires a majority vote. And is there discussion before we come to a vote? I see no hands. We will now come to a vote on the motion before you under Article 22. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The ayes have it unanimously. And we now move on to Article 23, and I call on Mr. Slaughter.
I move to dismiss the article.
You may speak to your motion. It's been seconded.
Since our budget's in balance and we have no additional spending that we need to do with regard to the budget, we do not need to borrow or take, I shouldn't say borrow. We don't need to take any money from stabilization in order to fund our needs for the coming year.
And Ms. Brewer for the Select Board.
What he said. We recommend a dismissal.
Thank you. Since we are dismissing, this would have been a two-thirds vote if we were appropriating anything, but since we're not and just dismissing, this only requires a majority vote. Is there discussion before we come to a vote? I see no hands. We will now come to a vote on Article 23. The motion to dismiss requires a majority. All those in favor of dismissing Article 23, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. I hear unanimous vote. We now move all the way ahead to Article 31. Yes, I hear point of order.
I wonder if you could be so kind, Chris Riddle, Precinct 2, as to tell me, so on my chart here, which articles we still have to do yet.
Okay. I'll do my best. You want all of them or just the next like two? Okay, no. 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42. And then there's the two, I believe, that we moved to June 2. And those are Part C of Article 20, and I give permission, I'm going to shout out the other number, and 24. I think I got that right. Okay. That was scary. Okay. Article, Article 31. I call on Ms. Kruger to make a motion.
I move in terms of the article.
I hear a second. You may speak to your motion.
Article 31.
Get a microphone. Wait, wait, wait. Get a microphone. Yeah. Wait, wait, wait. We're still waiting for a microphone. The people at home need to hear you.
Jared Chevyn, Precinct 7. According to my notes, we were supposed to deal with Article 34 at 7:05. See?
Yeah, that motion failed. Didn't pass. Yeah. There was a procedural motion to move it to tonight, but it failed. Who knew? Okay. 31. Ms. Kruger, you may speak to your motion.
Article 31 is to approve a cell phone tower lease agreement leasing 10,000 square feet of town land at the transfer station. That would be our currently active landfill. To a lease agreement with Verizon Wireless. This is a multi-year lease of up to 20 years' duration and therefore requires town meeting approval. Any lease longer than three years has this requirement. On April 7, the Select Board voted unanimously to recommend you support the authorization for the town manager to enter into this lease agreement because we think it's an appropriate location for this type of communication infrastructure, a cell phone tower. And it will generate approximately $616,000 of revenue for the town over the 20-year lease term. And that comes out to a little over $30,000 a year, although it builds at 3%. So it starts out 20-something. And there's the possibility of other providers co-locating on the same tower, which would then bring in additional revenues. So this is an opportunity to increase town revenues with what we feel is minimal impact on the town or its citizens. We think this is a good thing.
Thank you. And Mr. Slaughter for the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee voted six to zero to recommend this to you. Hearing about revenues, generally music to our ears.
And this actually does require a two-thirds vote because it is a change of use of the property, is what my notes say. And is there further discussion? Yes, right here in the center.
Abby Johnson, Precinct 4. So I remember we did another cell phone tower some point back in history, five or six years ago or something. Is this a new one in addition to that one, or is it adding something to the existing one? Does anybody remember that?
Ms. Misanti? Or Mr. Mooreing, who? Mr. Misanti.
As he points at the town manager from the back of the hall. Yes, you're correct. I don't remember the exact year, but it was roughly, yeah, it was at least five years ago. There was a similarly worded article that town meeting approved. Subsequent to that vote, which gave us the authority to enter into such a lease, we were not able to conclude a lease with a vendor. So the cell tower never happened.
Yes, over here.
Phil Goslin, Precinct 1. I'm curious how tall the tower would be and at its maximum height, how far it would be visible throughout the town.
Mr. Mooreing.
Good evening. Guilford Mooreing, Superintendent of Public Works. The provider's actually trying to figure that number out. They're about at one, they're between 150 and 180 right now for the height of the cell tower. They haven't given us a final number, and they'll do that during the permitting process. And they will actually do the testing and visualization during the permitting process as well. So that is still to be determined.
Thank you. Yes, back there.
Bob Biagi, Precinct 2. I was wondering about technology. What happens if in five or 10 years, this technology is no longer used? Like, I mean, if you look at what happened in the past 10 years, will we still be getting the fee for this piece of land for that 20 years? Or is there going to be some way they'll get out of it because they won't need the tower?
Mr. Mooreing.
The way the industry is going right now, the cell tower will still be there. Verizon's actually putting several towers around our area right now. The issue is not the fact they don't have coverage. The issue with Verizon is that they don't have enough bandwidth for all the users. So they've actually put in, they're putting in two towers in our neighbor next door in Hadley. They're asking to put one in here, and they're actually looking to upgrade a couple other towers, they say. So in five years, we'll still be getting revenue. 20 years, we'll probably still be getting revenue as well. The issue will probably come a little later on in the life of the tower, like beyond 20 years, is what we think was going to happen.
Yes, right here in the center.
David Mullins, Precinct 8. If the tower becomes obsolete in 15 years, is Verizon obligated to take it down?
Mr. Mooreing?
Yes.
Looking for some new, yes, right there.
Faith Turner, Precinct 6. Is the amount that was negotiated the going rate? And if the tower is no longer in use, will Verizon have to be responsible for removing it?
I believe Mr. Mooreing just answered the second question in the affirmative. But anyone have an answer to the first?
No, he didn't. He didn't really. He said probably.
Okay. I thought he said yes, but you can answer it again. Mr. Mooreing.
Now I'm thrown off about what the first part of the question was. Sorry.
Why don't you, would you repeat the first question, please?
The first part was, is that the going rate, the amount that was negotiated?
It is the going rate for this area, although our attorney who reviewed the lease thought we should probably get more. But then I pointed out that the towers around us were going for about the same price, around $23,000, $25,000. So it's about the going rate for this area. If the tower's no longer needed and Verizon wants to get off of it or get rid of it, they do have to take it down.
Thank you. Yes, second row, right there.
Ellie Manir Gotti. What will happen to the transfer station? Will it remain like a transfer station, or will it become something else?
Mr. Mooreing.
This is a large piece of property, and everything will fit. So the transfer station will remain. The old landfill will remain. The flare will be there. Everything will still be there. It's just, we're just going to take a section of 10,000, one, 10,000? Oh, I lost the number real quick. Sorry. The lease area will be behind the transfer station where we have a couple piles of dirt right now, and that'll be the tower site.
Thank you. Yes, in the back there.
Do we, is this contract?
I'm sorry. Identify yourself, please.
Oh, Pat Church, Precinct 5. Is there a contract already negotiated and signed? And when might this be built? I know you said something about testing.
Mr. Mooreing.
We're still in negotiation with the contract right now, so it has not been signed. And they're hoping to have the tower up by the end of the year.
Mr. Misanti.
I just want to be clear. I have no authority to sign such a contract until you vote yes.
That would explain why it's not signed yet. Yes. Yes, second row there.
James Scott, Precinct 7. In construction of towers of various types, turbines, et cetera, one of the concerns is the effect on wildlife, particularly avian birds, interacting with the support towers as opposed to the tower itself. The tower has a very narrow profile, but supporting wires extending out. Is, are these concerns going to be taken in consideration in the choice of the construction of the tower?
Mr. Mooreing.
The proposed tower is a monopole. There are no guy wires and any other things go with it. It's just a single pole. At the top, there'll be a platform-like device. Actually, the tower we rent to Verizon at the Ruxton facility, which is in North Amherst, actually has a nice hawk that kind of hangs out on the top part of the tower. And I think it gets a little advantage on the animals below. But the, it will be a monopole. There'll be no other wires and guys around it.
Further discussion? Yes, in the back corner there.
Precinct 8, Isaac Ben Ezra. I'm glad to hear we haven't completed negotiations. So while we're thinking about what we want to say in the negotiations, I think we need a provision that if the technology should change, we're guaranteed every buck they presented in this contract upfront, because we're making all kinds of commitments based on that money coming in. You know, we'll build a new school or a new library. We're counting on that money. So let's make sure it's upfront and that we get most of it upfront. And they might go out of business. Who knows what'll happen? The only, I'm being silly. But I'm serious, because the technology, we may have in five years drones, not only delivering UPS, but also delivering direct units to the various, you know, cell phones. Anything is possible in this technology here.
Are we ready to come to a vote? Yes, right there.
Phil Goslin, Precinct 1. It seems to me that unlike the Ruxton property, 180-foot tower at the transfer station would show throughout the town quite a ways. So I just think people should keep that in mind. Also, I have a question. Would there be a flashing light, you know, like one of those red lights at night, or flashing white lights during the day, or anything like that attached to it?
Mr. Mooreing.
That also comes out in the permitting process, but right now, we do not believe so. We, the transfer station is not in any flight patterns for any aircraft or anything. So we don't expect to have any light requirements on it day or night.
Ready to come to a vote? I see no hands. Let's come to a vote on Article 31, which is before you. The motion is in terms of the articles. Article, this does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 31, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Moderator, here's two-thirds. We move on to Article 32, and I call on Ms. Kruger to make a motion.
I move in terms of the article.
I hear a second. You may speak to your motion.
First, this is a pretty short one. I'd like to read the article to you. Can everyone hear me? Is this good sound? Okay. Article 32, Acquisition of Easements, Triangle and East Pleasant Street Intersection. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift purchase and/or eminent domain in connection with the Triangle and East Pleasant Streets intersection project for public way and sidewalk purposes, permanent easements in, on, under the properties identified below and shown on a plan entitled Town of Amherst, Triangle Street at East Pleasant Street Conceptual Plan, March 2014, on file with the town clerk. And then there's two parcels listed, 75 East Pleasant Street and 231 Triangle Street. And I believe there's a map to go with this. And maybe, if not, maybe you have it in your packets. But did we arrange? Yeah, in the back of your handout, Article 32. But I think it would be helpful. There it is. Okay. This article will allow the Department of Public Works Committee and the Superintendent of Public Works, the staff, to explore all options for needed intersection improvements. The north end of our downtown is seeing proposals for a number of new development and redevelopment projects. As part of improving the function and public safety of this area, the Triangle and East Pleasant Street intersection is being looked at for traffic and pedestrian improvements. No decisions have been formulated about the recommended design options at this time. However, the authorization for easement acquisition will make grant submissions more competitive. This is being submitted to the Massachusetts, to the state's Mass Works Grant Program. There are three options currently under consideration for this intersection. First is a no-build option. Second is adding a left turn to Triangle Street. And the third is the roundabout option. The roundabout option, if chosen, we don't know, would require the most land area to be taken. And so the map you have shows this option and the land that would be authorized. This article does not authorize funding for the land needed. So any final decisions would have to come back to this body. And I'm hoping that Mr. Mooreing will be able to add to my information.
I now call on Ms. Ratner for the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends this article by a vote of six to zero unanimously for the reasons stated in our report.
Thank you. This will require a two-thirds vote, and we now open up to the floor for discussion. This will require a two-thirds vote, and we now open up to the floor for discussion. Do I see any hands? Yes, right there.
Chris Riddle, Precinct 2. I'm curious to know what the Brown family feels about this, particularly, I note that on the plan there, it appears that the parking in front of their commercial property there is gone, is that correct?
Mr. Moore.
The town's discussing with the Brown family how this will impact their property, it's not really knowing exactly what's going to be done. The parking, right now, will remain. With the roundabout option, there is probably two to three feet, four at the most, that will go, be cut out of the parking area, but there's still room for parking in front of the store. The interesting thing about this property is that the sidewalk is actually on Mr. Brown's property, it's not on the town way. So the sidewalk would still continue to dive into the property like it does now, and then go along the storefrontage, and there would be room for the parking, car parking.
I'm sorry, please, you need to be recognized, so could you raise your hand, I'll recognize you? Yes. Get a microphone, please.
James Scott, Precinct 7. Could you please identify the property referred to as the Brown property on the map that's before us?
The Brown property, sorry, sorry about that. The Brown property is where the convenience store is, Primo Pizza, and there's a little bank at the end of that. So that is right next to Bank of America, and I'll now point to it, so I can't talk and point at the same time.
Thank you. Yes, right in the corner front there.
Alex Kragabe, Precinct 9. I'm going to vote in favor of this, because it makes us more competitive in grants we are applying for, for doing something with this intersection. I'm also the former executive director of the Amherst Business Improvement District downtown, and I feel like this intersection needs some work, it's very lopsided, as I'm sure many are aware. One thing I do want to say is roundabouts, I'm very cautious about roundabouts. They're excellent for, this kind of roundabout is excellent for moving traffic, car traffic through the intersection, but they are not geared towards pedestrians. And since this is a very pedestrian-heavy part of town, you know, it's important to consider the needs of pedestrians in this. So I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea to put a roundabout there, but I think we just need to be very cautious of that issue. But I am going to vote in favor of it, because, again, I think it's a good idea to have all the options open on the table. And again, they said that we'd need to go back to us for funding approval, if we do produce something, so I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Thank you. Yes, in the blue shirt on the aisle, right there.
Elisa Rubenstein, Precinct 10, and someone who drives and walks through this intersection almost daily. I do, I am aware it needs a lot of work. It's a very dangerous intersection. In fact, a traffic study conducted by UMass, or done for UMass, said it's the second worst intersection that they studied for the study, which I've been trying to find on the town website and couldn't today, so I don't know where it is. But my point is, I'm concerned about the process of this taking land from the Brown family on one side, and yet, just a few months ago, allowing a five-story building to be built in the south, that little triangular corner south of that intersection, which goes right up to almost the street on the north and south sides. So this is going to create a lot of additional, there's no parking at that site, but it's going to create a lot of foot traffic there. And since it was passed, I mean permitted, it's kind of limited the options of what can be done at that intersection, now that there's going to be a five-story building. So I'm just expressing concern about how this was like a cart before the horse, that the traffic impact for that intersection should have been studied before giving a permit to a five-story building. I just feel it's unfair, land-taking by eminent domain, is pro one property owner and against another. Thank you.
Yes, right in the center there.
This is a sketch of the proposed drawing, Kendrick Place, that would go on that corner. It had several waivers of zoning requirements to be able to be built, including no setback. I think this is a case of robbing Peter to pay Paul. There's no room for a sidewalk, I think it has little to do with the intersection, it has to do with moving the road so that a sidewalk could be provided for this building.
There is no, the sidewalk stays in the public way on this project. As the sidewalk that was shown in the drawing, that is the public way. The building was allowed to build to the property line, that was the planning board's decision. But the sidewalk is in the public way, is.
Thank you. Yes, right here, second row.
Frank Addy, Precinct 8. I'm a little bit disoriented, can you point out where this building is on the map?
See, Spencer, the building doesn't exist yet, though, you understand?
It's in the vacant lot next to Bartucci's, is where it goes. Point out Bartucci's.
Thank you. Looking for new hands, first. Yes, third row from the back in the blue.
Adrian Turisi, Precinct 7. I'm a little puzzled about, I need some explanation or clarification regarding Article 32. Why is the motion to acquire in these many ways before the decision has been rendered for whether there will be, what there will be among those three options? So the question is, why? And if I can back it up, the second option was, did I understand, left turn? And the third option was what we're looking at? With that third option, is that going to be about the size of what's at the UMass roundabout? Or are we looking at something down in South Amherst, in front of Atkins?
Yes, Ms. Kruger.
Well, I just wanted to clarify again from my earlier comments, the reason that we're considering this acquisition of easements, and that has to be through town meeting approval, we're doing this now so that we would be as competitive as possible for state grant funding that is available to help us with the intersection. So by showing that we've authorized the possible easement-taking, we put ourselves in prime position for that funding, at least, and that's my understanding. And three options are under consideration, but there's a whole process for deciding what the final recommended option will be, and again, it still has to come back to town meeting for the money to pay for any takings should they be needed, and it's not clear yet how much land in which one. So we're putting the maximum set of options out there to make us as highly competitive as possible, so that we can get state money for this.
Yes, way in the back there.
Marianne Adams, Precinct 10. Mr. Moderator, may I make a motion to refer and then speak to that motion?
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much. I'm making a motion to refer this article back to the planning board for further consideration, and the reason I'm making this recommendation is that this whole scene, excuse me?
Can I interrupt you a second?
Oh, sorry, yes.
This isn't a planning board motion, it's a Select Board motion?
Well, then, that's fine.
Okay, so why don't you try again and make a motion to refer it back to the Select Board?
Thank you. I'd like to move to refer this back to the Select Board for further consideration.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, you may speak to your motion.
Thank you very much. I live two blocks from this intersection, I drive through it at least twice daily, sometimes longer, sometimes more often. This is an extremely dangerous intersection, it's an intersection, particularly when school is on, when the eastbound traffic is often mucked up trying to wait for a car to turn to the left, and then other cars jump around to the front with danger for bicycles and other traffic coming in that direction. It was identified by the traffic study that a previous speaker spoke to as the second most dangerous intersection in this area. This is a traffic study that was not available, because it was not yet publicly posted to the planning board when they approved the proposal for Kendrick Place. Kendrick Place, which will be bought, built on that corner, will have 36 units on floors two to five, which gives us 144 bedrooms, and possibly, if people are coupling up, 288 people without cars, because there is no parking for Kendrick Place. So we really don't know what directions the cars for the residents of floors two to five will be coming from. There'll be a cafe on the first floor, there will be other public buildings on the first floor. This is going to be an extremely busy pedestrian, bicycle, double, I guess, they're not double-decker buses, they're kind of two-on, hanging onto each other buses, and cars in this intersection, and we really don't yet know what the difficulties are going to be. I don't like this kind of piecemeal planning. I would like the Select Board, or whatever group is in charge, to gather the information that we need, built on the projections about Kendrick Place, which is evidently a done deal, but at least let us know what the use is going to be, where the parking is going to be, what kind of cars are going to be involved, bicycle, foot traffic, and the whole nine yards that go into a real planning, which I guess is why I thought about the planning board, because this is a project that does the planning. Thank you very much.
Ms. Misanti.
Yeah, just a couple comments, and it's really up to the body what you want to do. I would agree with many of the speakers tonight who expressed concern about the functionality of the intersection in its current form. So that's, I think that's a fundamental point. The other main points, though, to consider are that for both the Kendrick Place project that has been permitted, as well as when you read the transportation study, traffic study, that was part of the larger UMass traffic study, upgrades to that intersection are not a prerequisite for some of the build-out, new development that is envisioned or already permitted in that area. That's a fundamental point. So that was not anything, I know that the planning board didn't think about at the time of that permit from last fall. The article before you tonight is to authorize the Select Board to acquire easements if necessary related to intersection improvements. If there's consensus that the intersection needs to be upgraded, I share that sentiment, and I'm trying to take steps in my role with the town to put us in a position to actually implement improvements to that intersection, and the one thing we don't have a lot of is money. And I want to be in as competitive a position as possible to compete for state grant funding in order to implement some intersection improvements there. And there are many options on the table, there'll be a public process, additional public process through our Public Works Committee, as further exploration this spring into the early summer about what's the right option, one of which is to simply upgrade the signals themselves, which would require a few, if any, easements to accomplish. The question is, that is still being studied, is that good enough? So this puts us in a better position to compete, compete for the grant, to make real progress versus just, you know, not being satisfied.
Thank you. So the motion before us is a motion to refer, which requires a majority to pass. If that fails, the main motion will be before us, which again requires two-thirds to pass. Further discussion before we come to a vote. Yes, right here in the corner.
Yes, John Fox, Precinct 10, and I'm very much in favor of the motion that has been made. I think that potentially the construction of Kendrick Place is a disaster waiting to happen. I think we have to take it much more seriously than some of the discussion has so far indicated. We're talking about 36 units, four bedrooms per unit, 144 bedrooms, and that arrangement, I think we all know, is suitable primarily for students. And I'm imagining that there will be a number of students who aren't legally there, but let's just deal with 144. And I'm picturing, which I often experience, because I live near this triangle intersection and go through it often, a December night, or December morning, snows have preceded it, the rain the night before, and you have all those students who are taking their final exams, who need to get to campus, the roads are icy, they're looking at their handheld, whatever they have, and they need to get to class. And I think this is going to be extremely dangerous. Additional left-hand signals aren't going to solve this problem, a rotary isn't going to solve the pedestrian, the problem of pedestrians getting through it, you can expect a lot of them to ignore any of the signals. And if you've gone through that intersection under these stressful conditions, you can imagine all the students trying to get across there. So I think we need a serious debate, not another consultant, but a serious debate about what will really address what could be dangerous conditions throughout the school year. I even believe that we may need tunnels, as we've seen at UMass, to make sure that the students have an access to the campus without having to cross that intersection. This is a very expensive way to go, but I'm not sure that there's another answer. But I don't think we have any answers yet in this, what's offered here, and I certainly don't think that we should appropriate monies until we have a clearer picture of what the dangers are, what people view as possible solutions. And then we ought to proceed, the idea of piecemealing this going ahead with something that will maybe help the traffic, but not solve the problem of pedestrians entering that intersection in ways that are really scary for drivers, and we might not be able to see them. I think that we're going to experience some awful, awful outcomes. So please support this motion, let's get back to the planning board, not another consultant, let's get back to them, let's hear the experts in town, the experts on, employed by the town, and town meeting members, and citizens generally, and let's get serious about what is a very serious problem. Thank you.
I just want to remind people again, the motion before us is a motion to refer this authorization back to the Select Board, and furthermore, the main motion isn't appropriating any money, so those two things are important points to understand. Mr. Steinberg.
Yes, thank you. I think that it's important to focus on the question of referring it back to the Select Board, and remember that that is the motion that is on the floor. This is, you know, a lot of very important and valid discussion about a couple of things. One is concerns about Kendrick Place, which has been approved, and the impact that is going to have on traffic in both pedestrian and road traffic. And the other thing is that we know that this is already- And the other thing is that we know that this is already a very dangerous intersection. I appreciate the fact that we had a traffic study financed by UMass that told us that it was a dangerous intersection, but those of us who drive it on a regular basis probably didn't need the traffic study to point that out. But this is a motion that would refer something to the Select Board that the Select Board is going to be considering anyway, because when you grant, if you grant, the easements that we're talking about, it's just the authority to do it. There's nothing that's happening. As has been pointed out, there's no money. And the questions that have been raised about the other points that we were talking about, the effect of Kendrick Place on this intersection and other development on this intersection, and the type, the problems with the intersection itself, are things that the Select Board is going to have to consider, and we will do so in conjunction with the Public Works Committee, which will very thoroughly look at the process and then issue a report, which will come to the Select Board. And so those are two opportunities for a very public process with participation. So what it comes down to is, if that's going to happen, referral is not necessary to make it happen. Thank you.
Further discussion? Um, yes, all the way in the back there.
Jerry Weiss, Precinct Eight. If we could continue on that discussion of, we're making an authorization to purchase or acquire, but without any money, so you can't purchase or you can acquire if they want to give it away. So what's the process? What, we're authorizing you to do something that you can't do unless we give it, we give you some money, isn't that right? How does this work?
Ms. Kruger?
My understanding is you're authorizing us to acquire the easement, so it's showing the intention of Town Meeting to go ahead with that, but we don't have, for the, as the first step in, in one, as Mr. Steinberg described, our own town process for looking at design options, and the first step in applying for grant funds to help us look at preliminary design. So I, maybe somebody else knows the legalities more, but...
Yes, Mr. Maureen.
Hello again. The way we do these projects is we start laying them out, and we start looking at what we might need to take or what we might need to give back and so forth. Once we do that, then we go to the property owners and we start talking to them. We always start with, this is what we're doing, this is the improvement, if you're willing to donate this property or talk to us about donating it, that's how we start. If they say no, we need you this much money to do it, then we come back and get funds for it. To date, we've only had maybe two where we've had to come back and actually get funds for. Of all the authorizations you've given us to do this, most people, the impact is small once we finally get it all worked out and they agree to, agree to donate it. In this situation, yes, we may have to come back, but we don't know yet because we have to decide and then work it out. We are still now working on the concept that it's a small impact and most people will donate it. Bank of America has been informed, and Mr. Brown has been informed of what is going on. But that's how we run these, when we do them.
Thank you. Yes, blue shirt, right there.
I really hadn't intended to speak tonight, but my, George Keller from Precinct One. My question really is, I understand why we're going for this, and I've been, as a professional planner, I've been through this process before, assisted in it, and, though not for Amber. But my understanding is that the conceptual plan that's referred to in this motion, in this article, is really the maximum amount of taking or acquisition that would be, is really what's shown in this plan. And my concern is that I think previous several, that, as a previous speaker spoke, said, that there may be more extensive as a result of the changes due to the Kendrick Place approval and the development there, and that there may be, in fact, more extensive changes that will be required in order to accommodate those kinds of issues that the previous speaker raised. I would also raise questions about the extent to which bicycle, bicycle ways have been taken into account in bus stops, given the intensity of that new development there. So my, I would support the motion to refer back to the Select Board for further consideration and consider that a broader plan be considered, be drawn up with the assistance of the Planning Board.
Um, yes, a hand back there, third row from the back.
To help me make a decision about this motion to refer, I'm just wondering, in light, in light of the possibility of grant funding, does authorizing the takings require any action concerning proceeding and looking with design options? My understanding is that it does not. Is that correct? I mean, authorizing the takings means that the town, that the town is authorized to look at acquiring some land. It does not require the town to proceed with any design, right?
Ms. Kruger?
That would, that would be my understanding. I, I'm, the motion to refer back, I think is, isn't as constructive as going into the very beginning of a design process that involves a lot of public input. And I think that the conceptual, the pre-conceptual options that I spoke of are there because we know we have Kendrick Place coming online and other possible development projects. So in order to actually start our own town process for design, this is, this is a step. It assists in that process, but I, I would have to encourage you not to refer back and to let's start to improve a very dangerous intersection, which will take some amount of time and public process.
Mr. Masanti?
Yeah, I would, I would answer that by kind of re, re, restating what I was saying earlier. It is not a requirement of the grant to have the authority to execute easements upon application for the grant, which would happen prior to the next Town Meeting in the fall. But it, it puts us in a position, as we work through design options through a public process later this spring, and we apply to the state for funding to improve the intersection, a fundamental question that the granting authority at the state has is, well, that's great, if we give you this grant, do you have the ability to execute it? And so by having the authority to negotiate and, and implement easements if necessary, that puts us in a position to say yes.
Um, yes, right here, second row, center.
I'm a driver, so I like roundabouts a whole lot.
Identify yourself, please.
Gary Tardakoff, Precinct Nine. I'm a driver, so I really like roundabouts. The idea of jamming hundred-plus people into that corner who can't have cars because we haven't given them parking spaces makes me look at that roundabout with those multiple crossings just to get around it. What the gentleman said about it being dangerous, seriously dangerous. I don't think you need, I don't think the state should let you have a grant of money so you can go on not planning this corner. You may be need tunnels, whatever you need. We shouldn't get you money so you can then try to think of what to do. You ought to do some planning and think of what to do. I, I think there's a lot of mistrust of what hasn't been done here yet.
Yes, two rows behind there in the blue shirt.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Bernie Kubiak. I share the great weather in Precinct Eight with Mr. Ben Ezra. Mass Works grants are competitive. I know, I've lost a couple. I used to be a town administrator, I have great sympathy for Mr. Masanti. What we're trying to do here, why the motion refers misguided, is we're trying to come up with money for a planning process that will take into consideration all the concerns and then some that have been raised tonight. One of the ways you make yourself more competitive in a highly competitive situation is to have site control. This doesn't quite give the Select Board site control, but it comes close. So if you want to see some real action around improving that intersection, if you want to see some really good ideas laid out, if you want to have a public process to do that, you're going to vote no on the motion to refer, and then you're going to vote yes on the main motion. Thank you.
Um, yes, purple shirt, right there.
Andy Churchill, Precinct Three. I call a question.
Motion for the previous question has been made. We will now come to a vote. If two-thirds of you vote yes, we will then be voting on the motion to refer. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator, here's two-thirds. We now come to a vote on the motion to refer Article 32 back to the Select Board. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion to refer, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator, here's the no vote. It says failed. We now have before us the main motion again, which requires a two-thirds vote. Yes, in the back of the row there.
Jim Oldham, Precinct Five. I'm going to vote no on this motion. I'm frankly wondering if anyone was here last year when many of the same individuals who are sitting in front of us tonight, asking us to authorize acquisition by gift purchase or eminent domain, explained to us that it's not appropriate to authorize eminent domain with vague plans. In that case, we were dealing with a property owner whose rights deserved no respect, a property owner who, who has disrespected some of the most vulnerable members in town. We had a motion that would have helped us acquire a piece of property, would have helped the manager seek grants to acquire Echo Village, and several leaders in town who are sitting there tonight arguing that we should use eminent domain to take property from an individual that happens to be across the street from a new development that we've just allowed. We don't know how much will be taken. We don't know if the plan will be a good plan, but we're being asked to, to trust, and they'll come back to us. In the case of Echo Village, when we tried to give permission for eminent domain, some of us in Town Meeting, we heard about the property rights of the individual, who again, in my humble opinion, had very little reason to be respected, whereas in this case, I think there's more reason to respect the property rights of the targeted properties. But above all, we heard that it wasn't appropriate to do eminent domain at that stage, and I think it's equally inappropriate at this stage, where we don't know what, what amount of property or whether or not it will be needed. And, and I'm troubled to get such inconsistent statements from, from the leadership in town. Either it's appropriate or it's not appropriate. And, and there were very strong statements warning us against the dangers of eminent domain, and yet here, we're being asked to do it, and again, there's no plan. I will vote no.
Further discussion? Yes, second row, right here.
Gabor Lukács from Precinct Ten. And I'm, Gabor Lukács from Precinct Ten, and I'm new to Town Meeting. And so I don't know how Kendrick Place came to existence, but I sense that that's the white elephant in the room, because this is a fairly small issue about a small piece of domain right here. So why we talk so much about this is because that has been, there has been a mistake before, which creates a dangerous situation over a pre-existing dangerous situation of that I miss planning, but not in the future, I miss planning in the past, and I will vote no on this as well. Thank you.
Um, yes, third row in the aisle, right here.
Margaret Roberts, Precinct Nine. I'm concerned about doing adequate planning, which seems to be the issue we're talking about. The Select Board, the Planning Board are not going to be able to do this. We need real planning on it. We need money to do that. That is what the grant would begin with. We're not going to do this unless we have the money to do adequate planning, so we need the grant.
Um, yes, right in the center there, right, yes, second in from the aisle, you.
Mary Wentworth, Precinct Five. I understand the position of the people at the front of the room. They want to go ahead with their plans to whatever, to this intersection, but there's also on the part of the people sitting here as Town Meeting members, a reluctance to accord too much leeway to the people sitting at the front of the room because we feel that, and I'm, well, I should say, I feel that a serious mistake was made with the permit for Kendrick Place, and that has just added a huge factor to this intersection. And so we feel that we need to know maybe more full planned, fully planned options for what could be done here, and that maybe we could start with the least intrusive and the least expensive option first.
Um, yes, yellow shirt, right there.
Tim Neal, Precinct Four. In listening to this discussion, all I see here is an authorization for the Select Board to proceed in a process. We are not voting a plan, we are not voting dollars. As part of the process, what I've heard is they would, their job is easier if we grant this process through this, this article. It's not approving a plan. Once their plan is made, they will come back to us. So for us to think we're denying a plan, we don't trust their plan, nothing's being proposed, all we're doing is giving them an option to proceed in their judgment in the most judicious way possible. So I'm going to vote in favor of this, and I think the rest of you should as well. Thank you.
Mr. Maureen.
I just want, I just want to clarify a couple of things about the process that got us to this drawing that's in front of you. Can I get? So when we, when we look at doing an intersection improvement, we look at everybody, as we've, as you've come to learn, we look at the pedestrians, we look at the transit, we look at the motor vehicles. The biggest issue about pedestrians is how much pavement they're crossing. Right now, if you're crossing the road, and you're crossing from Kendrick Park, you're heading north on East Pleasant Street, you cross three lanes of traffic, twelve-foot lanes, thirty-six feet. If we were actually to... If we were actually to design the intersection with a left turn lane on Triangle Street, we're adding another 10-foot lane at the minimum. If we add bike lanes for bike accommodations, we're adding five feet to four feet on each side. That's now eight to 10 more feet of pavement. So, now you're crossing instead of 30, what did I say, 36? You're now crossing another 50-some feet of pavement at a skew, not at parallel, at a skew. So, we look at reducing that pavement width. So, as we look at our options of designing, designing intersections, we chose the best one to be the roundabout. It does improve traffic circulation and it improves pedestrian circulation. A pedestrian has to cross 12 feet of pavement until they get to a safe island, look in the direction they're going again, and then cross 12 more feet of pavement. That's how we set it up, and that's kind of why the roundabouts are coming out in these situations as being the best alternative. It's not that we ignored anything in the planning process. We really, truly look at it. The impact of the turn lanes as well is this picture here on Kendrick Park. If we put a left turn lane in at Kendrick Park, there is now only a straight turn lane, left turn lane combination, and a right turn lane. We have to keep the right turn lane combination from UMass, and what you end up with is 36 feet or 30 feet of pavement just for the traffic heading from UMass heading east on Triangle Street. You have to cut into the common, or not into the common, you have to cut into the green space next to Kendrick Park, 12 to 14 feet. So, when we say that the option before you is the most, the largest taking, it's the largest taking outside public land. We didn't add this, because this is town land, and if the town decides to do this option and put three, three turn lanes in and put three lanes coming from UMass, we'll assume that they want to do this taking from Kendrick Park. So, we do look at everything. We look at the pedestrian crossings. We look at the, getting the buses through. The bus has no issue crossing and going through the roundabout at Eastman Lane. The Eastman Lane roundabout is actually smaller than the one we're proposing here. So, even the double bus they have will pass easily through this intersection. So, we do, and we do think about this when we plan it out and before we come to you. We've given you the worst-case scenario, we think, for taking land, because we don't think the left turn lane option and taking land from Kendrick Park is actually going to fly very well with the public. And it's not the best pedestrian option. The best pedestrian option, like I said, is the roundabout with the shorter crossing distance. And I apologize for explaining that one more time, but I thought people might need to hear that again. Thank you.
Looking for somebody new. I'm right here in the front.
Siobhan Best, Precinct 9. So, first of all, I really like the roundabout at Eastman Lane. I think it really helps traffic to flow beautifully in that area. But there is not slated to be a five-story building with 144 occupants minimum right abutting that, that roundabout. And so, I just, and I had a question, and I'm kind of new to town meeting and, you know, but I just want, had a question about how did this five-story building kind of just, how did it happen with, with no? I'm hearing laughing, so apparently there's been a lot of discussion about it, but I just need to be filled in. So, and what about, what about the parking? What about the waste management from this five-story building? What about all of these things? And I, I don't see, I haven't seen a diagram of the other two alternatives.
I'm letting her finish, and then I'll talk about it.
Yeah, so I haven't seen any, any diagrams of, and any other, the, the previous two alternatives that were mentioned.
Okay. Before, before I take any response, and if somebody from one of the boards has a short response, I'll accept it. But this is pretty off-topic. We're talking about granting easements for this traffic intersection, and we don't want to get into the topic of how the five-story building came to be. Okay, it's really off-topic.
Point of order?
Sure, yes. What's your point of order?
Her, her statement was, the final, she was, Jim Oldham, Precinct 5. She, she was asking why we didn't see diagrams for all three possible designs. That was...
And what I said is if somebody wants to respond, they may, but I'm just giving a sort of heads-up to people that I'm not going to let the discussion go into the pros or cons of the five-story building. See anybody on the boards who want to respond? No. Right there in the center.
Abby Jensen, Precinct 4. I call the previous question.
Motion for the previous question has been made and seconded. We will now come to a vote to end debate. Two-thirds of you vote yes, we will come to a vote on the main motion under Article 32, which also requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderator, here's two-thirds. We will now come to a vote on Article 32, which in turn requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 32, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Moderators in doubt, we will have a standing vote. If 15 of you raise your hand, we can have a tally vote. Otherwise, a standing vote. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We have a tally vote. I need everybody, I need everybody to be quiet and listen, because there was some confusion, and there was a vote that we were not able to count last time because of it. And I really think it's because people weren't listening to what I had to say about how tally votes work. So, please pay attention. We are passing tally card number four. That's correct, right? Towards the aisle where your tellers are located. Please make sure you pass the card with the correct vote number. Pass a red card for a no vote, a green card for a yes vote. You must, you must stay in your seat until the tellers have collected the cards and your row has been released by the tellers. If you are not seated in your row when the tellers collect the cards, your vote will not be counted. Thank you. Tellers, you may proceed. Oh, boy. The yes votes are 79. The no votes are 62. Since this required a two-thirds vote, it has failed. We now move on to Article 33, grant of easements. I call on Mr. Steinberg.
I move in terms of the article.
I hear a second. You may speak to your motion.
Thank you. While this has the word easement in it, this is very different from what you just voted for several important reasons. One is that we would be giving an easement, not being the one acquiring an easement. And secondly, this is not a road that has high traffic or high development on it. For those of you who are not familiar with Meeting House Road in Pelham, Meeting House Road is really a dirt road or gravel road that comes off of Amherst or Amherst Road. And it is, the principal landowner is the town of Amherst that abuts this property, because it's our watershed area. It also abuts some houses, there's some houses on the road and, that are obviously in Pelham. And there's the Buffum Falls Conservation Area, which is a very nice hiking area back there. And the town of Pelham would like to have easements from our owned land, which we own for watershed protection purposes, in order to do some repairs on some bridges back there. A major beneficiary of getting this work done will be the town of Amherst, because we need to get our vehicles into the watershed area for a variety of purposes, including the intake area for the Centennial Water Treatment Plant. So, this is something I don't, that we're not anticipating that we'll be receiving compensation, but we are receiving a huge benefit in having this road maintained so that it is accessible to our vehicles. And the Select Board voted four to zero with one member absent to recommend this to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I call on the Finance Committee, I have a quick public service announcement. You know all about the "They Represent You" document created by the League of Women Voters that has the names and phone numbers of all town meeting members. Monday is your final chance to submit corrections. If you have any corrections to submit, please go to their site at l w v amherst.org and follow the links to make your corrections. Thanks. I now call on Ms. Ratner from the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee has no recommendation on this article. We could not see any financial consequences for the town.
Thank you. This will require a two-thirds vote. It is a property transfer with an additional purpose involved. Is there discussion before we come to a vote? I see no hands. Oh, there's a hand right there. Yes.
Vince O'Connor, Precinct 1. May we see a map of the proposed easements? And can we have an explanation of? I know that it's, in some cases, we've been told we, if we try to do public works activities on conservation land, it requires not just a two-thirds vote of the town meeting, but a two-thirds vote of the state legislature. How is watershed land legally different from conservation land so that we control it, whereas if we, if this were conservation land, we would have to go to the legislature?
Mr. Moore.
Good evening again. The map up on the screen shows the areas that can be worked in. The dotted dash, the dotted areas around the bridges is where the easements will be. They're for drainage, and they're for some slope easements. So, that's what they're for. We don't have a more detailed drawing of the easements from Mass Highway. They gave us the construction plans for the bridges, but you can't find the easements in the construction plans, so I didn't show you that. The issue about basically Article 97 land that Mr. O'Connor brought up is simple. We purchased this land, or the water department, which was actually a separate entity of the town when it was purchased, purchased this land before Article 97 went into effect. So, there's several pieces, large pieces, of watershed land that do not fall under Article 97, which means that we don't have to ask the legislature to release them for this type of use.
Thank you. Further discussion? I see no hands. We will now come to a vote on Article 33. This does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 33, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. I hear unanimous vote. Mr. Hayden, I'm calling you to make a motion.
I would move to continue the debate.
I would move to continue debate, even though it's well after 10 o'clock.
All those in favor of continuing debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
Noes have it. Mr. Hayden, try again.
I move to adjourn until Monday, May 19th, at 7:00.
Motion to adjourn until Monday. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The ayes have it, we are adjourned. Please clean up after yourselves, please be on time next Monday. Thank you.